Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, December 13th, 2022. I have a meeting announcements. All meetings are livestreamed on the City Channel Pittsburgh's YouTube channel. Will the clerk please take the roll call?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations and in person, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. And our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
To amend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is amended. Thank you. And our next order of business is proclamations, and we have one to be presented by Councilwoman Strasburger. Councilwoman?
Thank you. So I was really touched by Community Day School, which is in District Five but in Squirrel Hill that both of our districts touch, and many of the students there, teachers there from both districts, that they really wanted to honor their teachers, some of our most critical frontline workers through some really tough years. And so this is a proclamation in honor of teachers. And then after we're finished with the proclamation, we'll have a special song that's going to be sung, an anthem that's going to be sung by the students. So wait for that. So as folks are coming up, we'll get started. Whereas the Community Day School founded in 1972 is an independent coeducational institution that has committed itself to the tutelage of students from Jewish backgrounds of all types for the past 50 years. And whereas the teachers at the Community Day School dedicate themselves to supporting pupils in their academic endeavors, athletic interests, and spiritual journeys by inspiring students to build their confidence and identity through immersion in Jewish values, teachings, and experiences. And whereas the Community Day School educators empower students starting at age three and instill positive values in them that prepare these children to excel in high school, universities, and in all facets of life post-education. And whereas the commitment, time, and resources provided by the teachers at the Community Day School provide exciting opportunities to the students to build their leadership skills and give back to the community here in Pittsburgh, as well as abroad during their annual capstone learning experience in Israel. And whereas another successful year for teachers at the Community Day School represents an opportunity to celebrate the progress of the past half-century while also looking toward the future for new and innovative possibilities to strengthen the faith of youth in the Jewish community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pittsburgh City Council congratulates the teachers at Community Day School for another year of enriching the lives of students and preparing them for successful futures. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare December 13th, 2022 to be Community Day School Teacher Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Do you have a motion to approve in a second?
To amend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, so we'll have a little song, and then we can say a few words. All right. (Music) 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 Very nice, very nice. Councilwoman, would you like to say a few words about CDS? About what they do in the spot? I have to say that this is such a pleasure to have in the community. They host one of the most and meaningful MLK days that really exist in the City of Pittsburgh. Every year, it's a day of service, of learning, and folks from around the city are really invited. So I'm sure that any council member would be invited if you so choose to come and attend. Would like to offer the opportunity for anyone from CDS to say a few words if you'd like. Thank you very much. Okay, let's get a photo. And who would like to help me hold the photo? We're going to look right out here. All right. Right out here. They could stand on the step there, Councilwoman. They could stand on the step to make my head. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for turning our day with a song.
And our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters that concern official action or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. May we have the first registered speaker, please? And the first registered speaker I have is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Phil's Cooper. Jerusalem, Israel, Palestine, two states. You all should go there. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. Summa cum laude. First in class, Pittsburgh Theological Seminary. MDiv, but don't call me Reverend. Best in class, Greek, Matthew 2022. Hebrew Prize for Isaiah 11:1-5, and I taught modern Israel at the University of Pittsburgh. I repudiate institutional distortion of Jesus the Jew and use of his image to kill millions of people in religiosity. A concern of Pittsburgh PA City Council is to offer religious information at high intelligence. This is pro-diversity. But the concern for religion, specifically especially the Christian religion, is in the four-year cycle establishing local representatives of the people of Pittsburgh in the offices of councillor and mayor at the swearing-in ceremony, as happened yesterday. SIC uses an invocation and benediction, always done by rabbis of Judaism or and/or most often by ministers and priests of Christianity, as happened yesterday. Never by imams of Islam. Now, why is that? Followers of the religion of Islam believe that the Quran, Arabic and English, is the word of God, infallible in theology and inherent in fact, that God is one, Surah 24:46, that God has not begotten a son, Surah 17:111. Followers of the religion of Christianity believe, at least most do, that the Bible, focused on the Gospels, is the word of God, also infallible in theology and inherent in fact, that God is three, Spirit, Father, and Son, Théu, Amy, Huios, Matthew 27:43. But there are three variants in that verse, that Jesus the Christ is the only begotten Son. Did this Christian God authorize that Mark be written 40 years after Jesus, that it would be written in Greek and not his Aramaic, and that the Gospel of Thomas not be included? Always including the religion of Christianity and always excluding the religion of Islam in the Sikh. In doing so, the government of the City of Pittsburgh decisively and systematically establishes Christianity over Islam on the book that it observes. And it is anti-constitutional, against Amendment 1 of the Constitution-
Two times expired. Next speaker, please.
-and will be prosecuted-
Next speaker, please.
...in court.
Next speaker, please. Seeing no further registered speakers, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council?
Hi. It's great to see you here. Don't forget-
Good morning, Mr. Ludwig.
...to grow up, to come back.
Please address City Council, Mr. Ludwig.
My name is Les Ludwig.
Thank you.
And in my almost 90th year, I have the pleasure of seeing these beautiful kids. I won't be here for their 90th. My kids went to Hillel and the other institutions of the Jewish faith that play a prominent part here in Pittsburgh. My purpose in coming today, therefore, is to call attention to a gap that's occurring and keeps recurring, and I've been coming for almost 20 years and really haven't seen a change yet. And that is, when a person or a group of people decide to raise money for a cause, it has to take a precedent because there is never an end to the need for finance. And instead, what we have done is we've literally wasted 23, most of 2023, because we're disorganized. We've put finance, yes, oh, in some facets, in the proper position, but not to give the freedom to move forward and raise millions of dollars that are out there that I have shown you are available. Why did we wait? Do we have to have a budget in process or passed? No. Fundraising should go on 12 months of the year, 365 days, so that these children will gain the benefit, the full benefit of our society. They're going to be cut short to some degree because the bread wasn't there, the money wasn't there for a particular program. So I call on you today to think in terms of looking at yourself and your position, to call attention to the fact that it's time to catch up. The years have passed. It's time to go ahead and reorganize and look at ourselves and say, we're going to raise the money so that these kids will get every possible potential benefit from our society. God bless them. Shema Yisrael, Adonai HaInu, Adonai Ahad.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig.
Hero Israel, the Lord our God, the Lord is one.
Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street up in the Hill District. Bedford Avenue, you know where the Civic Arena used to be? If you see that tall apartment building up there, that's where I live. And to the children, welcome. I'm glad you're here. So you can see how the government is run, how they run the government. And you can see they're not very punctual. They never start on time. They're supposed to start at 10. They stand around like they're in their homes. I'm talking to you children because you are our future, and you should be coming every week that you possibly can, even as a child if your parents let you. But once you become grown, come down and tell them what we need. They do not know. They live in a different neighborhood. I don't know what you need in your neighborhood. You don't know what I need. But if I come down and I tell them, you know, they talk amongst themselves, they get on the cell phone, they sit over there, these are some council people that you, if you come down and watch them, I believe they would stop it because, you know, you can sometimes shame some people. But sometime, I believe you can't with them. I have been coming for over 20-something years, every Tuesday and Wednesday, and they have gotten so that they will chase me out the room. I was talking to some children. I had my head turned. Mr. Kraus, now look, he turns us back. Turn your head around, blah, blah, blah. And he hollered at me and screamed. It scared the kids. And I'm saying, why are you doing this to me? Whereas I can be standing there and talking, he got up from the table, went to my councilman, Mr. Lavelle, the one sitting there with the yellow tie, and they got in a conversation. I said, no, no, don't talk to him. We only get three minutes. I tried to get five. And Ms. Harris was there at that one time. She stopped it. Bill Cardill came down, Chili Billy. We used to know him from scary movies. And I said Chili Billy. And he seemed surprised that I knew him. And he said he would sign the petition that we could get five minutes. They let him talk a half an hour. Some of the people come, they might talk a half an hour, 15 minutes. We get three. And we are the ones that are paying their salary. Understand that. We are their bosses. They may act like they were not. But you understand, we vote them in, and you can vote them out. There's quite a few on here that I should name that should be voted out. I got quite a few that should. If I was running the election, I would be down here with signs telling you who not to vote for. I know. I'm suffering. I'm the one that live in the neighborhood. When they said that the police was going to come and talk to every neighborhood, Ms. Gross said her and the mayor, Perdido, decided that they weren't going to do that. And had I to come to their neighborhood, I knew nothing about it. We have a black businessman. When they got rid of Harper and they didn't come to our neighborhood, the police came down and said, who can you call? They tasered him and everything-
Thank you.
...because we didn't get a chance to tell them-
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
...that we need the police-
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
...to listen to us.
Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Please approach the podium. Is there one? Okay. Good morning. You can wait a moment till the room empties. I'm sorry.
Good morning.
Thank you.
John Handorhan from Fineview. I have a couple of comments about the budgets, and the first relates to housing. Tomorrow morning, the city will conduct its second homeless sweep, this time on the North Side. Yesterday on the news, they asked a guy what he was going to do, and he said, no idea, just like the rest of everybody, nobody knows. Because as you all know, the shelters are full, and according to the mayor's office, the majority of people still out on the street or sleeping in their cars or crashing on their friends' and families' couches are on a waiting list for a home. So I ask you all to take this pivotal moment between this year and the next to admit, you are not doing enough to build, rehab, and convert new, deeply affordable housing. You aren't budgeting for it. I see 25% increase for the Housing Opportunity Fund, which is great, but will it be enough to stabilize everyone teetering on the edge of an eviction? Will its incentives coax enough landlords to accept vouchers? No, I'm willing to bet it will not be enough. And I see $5 million for the housing authorities work in the Hill District around Bedford dwellings, but that's only going to replace the existing affordable units there. And replacing public housing that we already have is also not enough. What I want to see is a big idea, something like a new publicly-owned dormitory, like our wonderful North Side YMCA, or a limited equity co-op pilot, which I know some of you also want to see, or a tenant right to counsel in housing court. But just pick something and try it now, please. My second comment is on the park tax spending plan and the controversy around it. Listen, it's our money, and they are our parks. And we, as an increasingly financially stable city, are more and more equipped to take on the very basic maintenance of our parks. That's great news. That said, I do hope you can make at least one little change in the budget with regard to parks. Fowler Park up in Perry Hilltop, its pool is going to spend another year empty, not because of a lack of lifeguards, but because of deferred maintenance. The money for the repairs is not in the proposed budget. Find the money and give us back our pool. All right. Thank you all for the effort that you've been putting into this budget, especially Councilmember Gross. Your questioning during budget hearings has been incisive, and I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Seeing now, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Burgess, Chair of Human Resources. Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works. Thank you, Councilman. And just as a tip, we'll change the name of the committees once we pass the rules.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1053, Resolution granting a vacation of an unopened, unimproved, unused 10-foot alley located between Arendelle Street and Dalton Avenue in the 26th Ward, First Council District of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill 1054, Resolution providing for a retroactive bridge maintenance reimbursement agreement or agreements with Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for local costs associated with work performed by PennDOT on the Woodruff Bridge for immediate repairs and maintenance at a cost not to exceed $44,396.80. Bill 1055, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a temporary license agreement with Allegheny County to provide access for the city to use a portion of property owned by Allegheny County as a temporary construction area for purpose of staging construction equipment, materials, and supplies needed for landslide remediation and stabilization of Williams Street. Bill 1056, Resolution authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement of sale with various property owners in the 18th and 19th wards of the city in order to advance the Mount Washington Landslide Remediation Project. And Bill 1057, Resolution authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary construction easements on certain properties in the 19th ward of the city in order to advance the Mount Washington Landslide Remediation Project.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill 1058, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of Finance to enter into a permanent easement with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority and People's Natural Gas Company, LLC, for the installation, maintenance, repair, operation, and removal of a natural gas pipeline on city-owned properties. Parcel IDs 47P271 and 47P263. Bill 1072, Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title 5, Traffic, Article 7, Parking by creating a new chapter 550, Lawrenceville Mobility Enhancement District.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Good morning, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Good morning, Madam Clerk.
And thank you for all your help this week.
Oh, thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1059, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with Allegheny Singer Research Institute, doing business as AHN Research Institute for professional services relating to the administration, implementation, and expansion of the reaching out on the streets routes program for a sum not to exceed $9,960,000 through 2024 and the payment of the cost thereof.
Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1060, Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Eric Walker and his council of record, Timothy P. O'Brien Esquire, in the amount of $7,500 in full and final settlement of litigation filed. Bill Number 1061, Ordinance amending the City Code at Title 1, Administrative, Article 3, Organization, Chapter 113, Mayor, by supplementing the sections related to the Office of Management and Budget. Bill 1062, Resolution, amending resolution, excuse me, 724 of 2021, authorizing the mayor and the director of finance to enter into a donation and professional services agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Land Bank and GRB Law to document the donation of legal services relating to the performance of designated quiet title actions on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh and further pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, acceptance of gifts to the city, accepting the donation by Pittsburgh Land Bank of such legal services to be performed by GRB Law on behalf of the city to extend the term of agreement or agreements until December 31, 2023. Bill 1063, Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code, Title 1, Administrative, Article 9, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Chapter 17508, Art Commission, Ornamentation for Municipal Projects, Plan Review and Approval, and supplementing Pittsburgh Code, Title 2, Fiscal, Article 1, Administrative, by adding Chapter 218.10% for art. Bill Number 1064, Resolution providing for the creation of the Public Art Fund and setting conditions for deposit and expenditure of such funds. And Bill 1065, Resolution authorizing an interdepartmental transfer in the amount of $264,805.53 from the bureaus of administration and animal care and control and the Department of Public Safety to the Bureau of Police. This transfer is necessary to assist the Bureau of Police with sufficient funding for necessary body armor placement.
Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle, you have a waiver of rule H for Bill 1065?
I apologize. I didn't see it. Motion to waive the rules for Bill 1065.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's sitting committee's agenda. Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I have to get used to saying that one. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill 1066, Resolution amending Resolution 420 of 2022, a resolution authorizing an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with EDOC Technologies, LLC, for licensing services and maintenance and support services to provide document management services to include Department of Mobility and Infrastructure- document management services to include Department of Mobility and Infrastructure documents at an additional cost not to exceed $20,500.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1067, Resolution further amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, as amended, entitled, Resolution adopting and approving the 2022 Capitol Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capitol Improvement Program so as to identify specific public service grant projects in City Council District Six and projects of the mayor's office, and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements for operation administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill 1068, Resolution closing out Community Conservation Partnerships Program Grant Project, a grant received from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources to prepare a master plan for the city-owned properties associated with the Emerald View Park. Bill 1069, Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code, Title I Administrative, Article IX, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Chapter 175, Art Commission, to transition Art Commission into the Public Art and Civic Design Commission. Bill 1073, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with RIP Medical Debt to purchase and discharge eligible healthcare debt owed by Pittsburghers as approved in the City of Pittsburgh's American Rescue Plan at a cost not to exceed $1 million.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have one communication. Madam Clerk, thank you.
Council President Kiel Smith presents Bill Number 1070, Communication from Castor Benyon, Executive Director of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, submitting a position and salary report as of November 29, 2022.
Can I have a motion to read, receive, and file?
No, moved.
And second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to our unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business before City Council? Seeing none, the next order of business is reports of committee for final action, and we'll begin with Councilman Ardene Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1046, reported a committee on finance and law for December 7, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1018, Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement or agreements with Gateways for Growth for the purpose of receiving a customized research brief on immigrant and refugee communities in Pittsburgh and a welcoming network general membership. Bill 1019, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund, Inc., for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $70,000 to integrate banking access into the 2022-2023 City of Pittsburgh's Summer Youth Employment Program. Bill 1039, Resolution authorizing the office of the city clerk to donate $45,000 to the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? I'm just going to add thank you to council members for the money for the food bank. We are doing distributions. Thank you, Councilman Kraus, for being a sponsor, along with myself, and actually should be sponsored by all members because we are doing food distributions in each of our districts for the Christmas holiday, and we'll be able to feed 125 families per district for the holidays. I think it's going to be really beneficial. We know there's a lot of people calling our offices struggling, and there's a lot of people calling the food bank for help this year. So, any further discussion? Okay, all the bills not ready for final action? All bills are not ready for final action? All in favor of the passage? Vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. And the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1047, reported a committee on public works for December 7, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1014, Resolution authorizing the mayor and/or the director of the Department of Finance and/or the director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to execute as necessary in instrument or instruments entitled Preservation Agreement, a 10-year covenant to ensure the maintenance and preservation of the architectural and historical characteristics of the Hartswell Monument in Allegheny County, Allegheny Commons Park, in favor of the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, which has funded the restoration of the monument by the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy for the benefit of the public.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee, well, on Human Resources. You're wrapping up your committee. Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1048, reported a committee on Human Resources for December 7, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1020, Resolution amending Resolution 211 of 2022, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an amended professional services agreement and/or contracts with Ceridian Human Capital Management, Inc., by extending the contract through 2025, and an additional cost not to exceed $1,100,000.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill, Councilwoman?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend. We discussed the amendment last standing committee meeting. The motion, I failed to actually make the motion to amend, so I'd like to make a motion to amend by substitution with the amendment before us today.
Amendment's before us. Members, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
On the amended bill? Thank you, Councilwoman. And on the amended bill, you've heard the reading in the title of the bill. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
No.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And that moves us to Councilwoman Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1049, reported a committee on land use and economic development for December 7, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1002, Resolution amending Resolution Number 767 of 2018, authorizing the mayor and the director permits licenses and inspections to enter into an amended agreement or agreements with DAPALonia for on-call emergency geotechnical services, including assessments, evaluations, land remediation plans, and expert testimony of properties subject to active life safety code enforcement violations. The agreements will add one year to the existing agreement term. The overall cost of the amended agreement shall not exceed $340,000, with the forthcoming one-year extension comprising $160,000 of that overall amount.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And that moves us to Councilwoman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Committee on Urban Recreation. You're wrapping up your committee, too. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for all the work you did on this committee.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1050, reported a committee on urban recreation for December 7, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1012, Resolution authorizing the mayor, director of Parks and Recreation, and director of finance to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an amended sublease agreement or agreements with the Boys and Girls Club of Western PA for continued operation of the Lawrenceville Senior Center located within Leslie Park as originally authorized by Resolutions Number 55 and 91 of 2011 at an overall cost of $198,000, and with the term expiring March 31, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management, and I just want to thank you for chairing both of those committees in the absence of a ninth council member.
Madam President.
Thank you. You did a great job. Thank you.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill Number 1051, reported a committee on innovation, performance, and asset management for December 7, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 997, Resolution amending Resolution 644 of 2020, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to adopt an existing government contract and enter into any related agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Carisov Technology Corp. to provide Google Cloud subscription services and add Google-assured workloads to provide secure storage for sensitive data on the city's cloud platform at an amount not to exceed $4,282,824.38. Bill 1021, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Computronics USA, Inc., for three years to handle day-to-day maintenance in support of one-stop PGH, including to address any defects that may arise with the system, and to define service level agreements, SLA, for resolution time meeting the needs of the City of Pittsburgh at a sum not to exceed $1,224,482. Bill Number 1022, Resolution amending Resolution 375 of 2021, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an amended agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Cohen Law Group and CTC Technology and Energy for renegotiation of the city's cable franchise agreement with Comcast and Verizon, and for consultation on development of fiber and wireless telecommunications assets and policy in an amount not to exceed $591,213.70. And Bill Number 1023, Resolution authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to extend a contract or agreements with Pittsburgh Community Television for public access television services by extending the term of the agreement until December 31, 2022.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Councilwoman?
I'd like to make a motion to amend by substitution. This is a technical amendment at the request of the Department of Innovation Performance.
For Bill, which one?
I'm sorry. Bill 1022, motion to amend by substitution.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? The, on the amended bill? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And the bill's amended. Now, is there any discussion on all the other bills? On any of the other bills? So, I'm going to just say a little bit about the cable franchise agreements with Comcast and Verizon, and I hope that part of, when we're discussing these agreements, I wish that they would really put some timeframe on when the utility companies have to disconnect their wires from built utility pools that we take down, that they take down, or we take down. Sometimes Duquesne Light will take down a pool, and you'll see a piece of a pole leaning or dangling with all kinds of other wires because they're waiting for the utility companies, usually Comcast and Verizon, to remove their wires. And so, it looks dangerous to the city. It looks bad for the city, and I don't see it in many other boroughs around, and I'm bored of the most boroughs, so I don't see it in any other place. So, I think that should be part of the discussion, a timeframe on when they have to remove those, those, those wires from the pools. Any further discussion? Okay. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? All in favor of the passage? Vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And that moves us to our last committee of the day. Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Councilwoman?
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 1052, reported a committee on intergovernmental affairs for December 7, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1016, Resolution authorizing the approval of the 2023 Housing Opportunity Fund Annual Allegation Plan, Council Districts All.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill hasn't, the bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions, and I have a few meeting announcements. Immediately following this meeting, council will hold our line item vote on the 2023 budget. Council will also hold a briefing this afternoon with sessions at 2:00 and 2:30 p.m. in our large conference room on the tri-party cooperation agreement as it relates to Council Bill 376. And council standing committee's meeting will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, December 14, at 10:00 a.m.[1705.72] Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. Also, Wednesday afternoon at 1:30 p.m., council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 2022-0817 as it relates to zoning changes in the Larmour neighborhood. Speaker registration will close at 12:00 p.m. Wednesday. Councilman Burgess, are you cheering that?
Aye.
Okay.
When is it?
Wednesday afternoon at 1:30.
Okay.
Okay. And Thursday, December 15th at 10:00 a.m., council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 901 as it relates to updating the rules of council. Speaker registration will close at 8:30 a.m. on Thursday morning. Councilman, you've been cheering the committee. Do you want to cheer that?
You were vying for that.
Yeah. I'll be here for both, but I just want to make sure. And also, on Thursday, council will hold a cablecast public hearing at 1:30 p.m. as it relates to Bill 856, the historic designation of the building at 412 Boulevard. The Allies' speaker registration closes at 12:00 p.m. Thursday afternoon. Also, on Saturday, December 17th, we have, we have a special meeting, Saturday, December 17th, at 10:00 a.m., council will hold a cablecast public hearing on the city council's amendments to the 2023 operating capital and council budgets. Speaker registration closes at 8:30 a.m. Saturday morning. On Monday, December 7, December 19th, at 10:00 a.m., due to the upcoming holiday, council will hold the regular meeting at 10:00 a.m. and the standing committee's meeting at 1:30 p.m. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. and at, and 12:30 p.m. respectively. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. And if anybody missed any of those notices, you can also contact any one of our offices or the council, city council office, or city clerk's office to get those updates again. And do we have anything from other members? Anything from members? Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting? We don't have any absent member. What?
Not exactly sure of the motion. I, it's come to my attention that there is an additional amendment under Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. I guess a motion to reconsider Bill 2022-997.
We have a motion, we have a second? Further discuss, any discussion?
Can we?
Okay.
Can we find the bill, please?
Councilwoman, what's the bill again?
997.
IMP.
IMP. It's a bill with IMP, for those who don't, at home. Okay. Any discussion?
Oh, 997, okay.
Okay. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill's amended, now when the amended?
No, I'm sorry. That was just a reconsider.
The motion to reconsider, I apologize.
So this is a motion to, again, it's a technical amendment from IMP.
Okay. Now we have a motion to amend.
We need, we need the written amendment.
They're, they're bringing it up, right?
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Louise, for doing so much work, thank you. I'll give you a second to look at it. We probably could do this tomorrow. Motion is second, any discussion?
Yes, I actually would love to be able to read the amendment before voting on the amendment, if that, if members don't mind.
I'll give you a second.
Do you want me to read it out loud?
It's up to the Councilwoman. It's her bill.
Councilwoman Strasburger, would you mind if we, like, kind of just read it out loud or something? I do not mind. It may just be a very small dollar amount, but I cannot tell, at this point. So this is another amendment that was discussed at the table last week. Okay, great. It looks like it's only a $100,000 difference in a $4.3 million contract, from 4.2 to 4.3. Correct. Got it. I'm comfortable, I appreciate. Of course. Apologies for all the amendments last minute today. Not exactly sure what's going on. It's the end of the year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Now, any further discussion on the amended bill? Seeing none, all in favor, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk please call the roll.
We didn't vote on the amendment. We didn't vote to amend yet, and I don't want to not vote to amend twice.
She did make a motion to amend, and Reverend Burgess seconded it.
And seconded, so we're just voting on the amendment now.
So we're voting on the amendment?
Got it.
On the amended bill?
On the amended bill.
We voted on the amendment.
We already voted on the amendment, while you were reading.
Reverend Burgess?
We made a motion to amend, we, it was seconded, we voted.
But you didn't vote on the amendment. The amended bill, I'm sorry.